We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. And we are privileged tonight to have the Girl Scouts with us. And I'd like to ask them if they'd come up and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We don't know the Girl Scout play. But you want to join them?
No, I'm fine.
But don't go far because you're up next. Next is a proclamation for Girl Scout Week, March 10th through the 16th, 2013. And I have you join me at the podium and I will present the proclamation. So proclamation, whereas March 12th, 2013 marks the 101th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the United States of America, which began in 1912 when Savannah, Georgia native Juliette Daisy Gordon Low gathered 18 girls to provide them the opportunity to develop physically, mentally, and spiritually. Whereas, for 101 years, Girl Scouting has helped build millions of girls and women of courage, confidence, and character who act to make the world a better place. Whereas, the award-winning Girl Scout Leadership Program helps girls discover themselves and their values, connect with others, and take action to make the world a better place. Whereas, the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest honor in Girl Scouting, requires girls to make a measurable and sustainable difference in their community, assess a need and design a solution, find the resources and support to make it happen, complete the project, and also inspire others to sustain it. And whereas, core programs around science, technology, engineering, and math, environmental stewardship, healthy living, financial literacy, and global citizenship help girls develop a solid foundation in leadership. And whereas, through the dedication, time, and talent of volunteers of different backgrounds, abilities, and areas of expertise, the Girl Scout Program is brought to over 200 girls in grades K through 12 across Grant County, New Mexico. And whereas, today, more than 50 million American women are Girl Scout alumni. 3.3 million girls and adult volunteers are active members. And Girl Scouts is the largest member of the World Association of Girl Guides and Girl Scouts, a global movement comprised of more than 10 million girls in 145 countries worldwide. Now therefore, I, James R. Marshall, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby applaud the commitment of Girl Scouts of the United States of America for their 101 years of leadership and expertise as the voice for and of girls, and proudly proclaim the week of March 10th through the 16th, 2013, as Girl Scout Week. Thank you. Just for the record, half of the four town councillors are former Girl Scouts, Girl Scout alumni. But I didn't invite them down this year because I was hoping that I could take the glory and I would get the thin minutes. It worked. Next up is public input. And I remind everybody, you have five minutes to speak. And if you're looking at me, I will give you a one-minute warning. And first up is George Julian Warren, Arts and Culture District and Tourism. George?
Mayor, Town Council, my fellow citizens. Thank you for allowing me to take a few moments, and I will only take a few, not the extended five. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm George Julian Warren. I am the new Silver City Arts and Cultural District and Tourism Director. I'm originally from Tucson, Arizona. I'm two and a half years in Silver City, moved upstream on the Gila River for the Gila Wilderness and to be a part of the historic downtown and Arts and Cultural District with my studio art business. And I want to, first of all, just thank the town for their support of Arts and Cultural District and in trusting us with the lodgers' tax money on behalf of tourism. I look forward to continuing that relationship. I also want to say that I was not aware that I was to bring foodstuffs in the form of cookies or otherwise. But if that'll help my next visit, I will. A couple of things I just want to report on happenings of Arts and Cultural District. And my first order of business there is about assets and obligations. I'm reviewing and laying down foundation to look at how we build an infrastructure that's sustainable for long-term for the district and for the community. That's internal. But on the external side, we have some exciting things also going on. One of those being that we recently received a New Mexico arts grant to, as a startup, to develop a clay arts trail in the first four months of that startup monies. We will be doing research and development in four counties and laying the groundwork for what will be a long-term project to develop a trail from southwest New Mexico through the state to promote tourism. There will be more information about that forthcoming, but it's expansive in that it encompasses anything clay, whether it's brick builders, or artisans, or museums. And so we're very excited about the potential of that, and you'll be hearing more going forward. We're also, at this moment, developing our campaign for New Mexico and Grant County tourism. So we will be communicating with the state and city. And I invite, at this time, anybody from the community, as well as from council, to contact me with any ideas and/or input some of you already have. And I look forward to working with you on that potential to bring in tourists from regional and statewide and national and international. Look back for a little moral support there. I'm going to close at that. There's more I could speak to, but I really just wanted to introduce myself, and I look forward to working with all of you and council, as well as community. Thank you.
Next up is Sheri Logan, Silver City, Grant County Chamber. Sheri?
Good evening.
Good job.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city officials. Thank you for giving us this time to briefly speak and kind of give you a quick little update on what we've been doing at the Chamber. We recently have announced who our new board members are, which is Ken Torres from Western New Mexico Communications, sorry, and Tony Trujillo, who was unable to make it this evening from Report McMinnon and Copper Gold, and Brad Logan from Comcast, and Bruce Ashburn, who is the director from the Small Business Development Center. And thank you for you guys. And we are currently in the process of making a decision on our new logo. We did a logo contest to rebrand Chamber Commerce. We selected five of those logos and put them out there on Facebook and sent them out to our members to vote on them. We are currently in that process, which will end by tomorrow evening. And then the board will pick three of those that the community, the members have chosen, and we'll make a selection on that and announce that, I believe, on the 28th. We've also got our Facebook account back up, and as well as Twitter, we're working on that, so that we can kind of keep more in touch with the community and letting them know what we're doing and what's going on. We're also getting ready to prepare, build a committee for the Fourth of July, because that's one of our biggest events that's coming up. And we're looking for volunteers to serve on that committee to help us coordinate everything. We're also doing some advertisement with Sun News on their website, which I'll let them speak briefly about that here in a couple of minutes. But it's a pilot program that we're doing that reaches the Las Cruces area, and I believe El Paso as well. And we're taking three of our members that the Chamber is sponsoring them on a pilot program to give them some free advertisement for a month to see how it works for them. We started up our Live at Five again. We did our last one last month on February 6th, it was at the Gallery 400. And our next one, it turned out really good. Our next one is going to be on Friday, March 22nd, at the Curious Kumquat. And our plan is to keep doing these every month, and we'll be getting out throughout the community, throughout Grant County. We're also doing a Chamber luncheon, and it's kind of just like a little mixer for people to come together, the business community to come together and talk about anything, concerns that you have, how we can support you, just different things. The next one that's coming up is going to be Monday, this next Monday, March 18th. It's going to be at WNMU at the Sunset Room. And we will also be introducing our member program that we're starting with the Cash Mob. Some more information will come about that from Randy here in a few moments. And we're also going to be meeting in the community. Our next, we're trying to get out throughout Grant County, so that we can just get out with the community and make sure that they know that we're there and if they have any concerns. Our next, our first one that we're going to be doing is going to be in Baird, and I believe it's going to be at Little Misha, so we have not confirmed the date on that yet. But we will be sending that memo out shortly, as well as posting it on Facebook. And I think that's all that I have for right now. If you want to talk about the Cash Mob, and then we can let you come talk, if there's any questions. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Randy Garcia, the Executive Assistant at the Chamber of Commerce. I'm just going to tell you a little bit about Cash Mob. Cash Mob is a group of shoppers that descend on a business with their cash in hand, $10 to $20. And we find a business that, I guess, is selected through the Chamber, the membership, and we all descend on them. It's probably a group of how many people?
Well, we're hoping to get a pretty big crowd. It's going to be within the membership. And so the members will get together and we'll make a decision. We'll announce at the same evening where the business that we're going to mob. And all of us get together, and of course, we let the business know ahead of time so that they're prepared, in case they have to have more staffing. And we all get together and we just, everybody goes in and we spend money. And then we'll get together afterwards at a local restaurant, and we'll talk about the experience, how it worked out, and put in some votes for the next business that we're going to mob the next month. Just something to have a little fun. And then I'll let Jesse speak a few moments here to inform you a little, give you a little information on what we're doing with the advertisement with Sun News on their online website.
I'm Jesse O'Toole, I represent Silver City Sun News. And with the help of the Chamber, Sheri and Alan, and Randy, I'm sorry, is that we formed a pilot group to advertise in Las Cruces webpage, which I get between 700,000 and 900,000 hits per month. And also, the Silver City Main Street Project is on this. And then we also have 10 other businesses from downtown, from lodging, restaurants, and art galleries. And what we're trying to do is kind of unite the whole town together in a co-op type of a situation of advertising in Las Cruces at a very inexpensive rate and be able to be out there on a regular basis. And hopefully, we will be attracting more tourism to come out here. We could also follow up on the click rates, how much activity will be taking place. And this is kind of our way for the newspaper to be able to get the community out there further on a regular basis. And then, of course, getting ready to start for the Tour de Gila, the Picmeade, and then Blues Festival that we're out there advertising ahead of time. And I really appreciate the help of everybody that joined in on uniting to do this thing together.
Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Sheri, I would invite you to come quarterly or so, and if you let us know on what meeting you want to come, we'll put you under reports. And that way, you won't be so time-limited. And just so everybody knows, I treated you with three speakers, so I gave you extra time. Next up is Fay McKemott for Immer.
Good evening. As the Director of the Members Region Arts Council, I just wanted to give you a brief recap of the last couple of months. In February, we had a very successful chocolate fantasia. We were able to bring 400 people into the downtown area on a cold, snowy, wet day. So ordinarily, it probably would have been like a ghost town downtown, but instead, we had 400 people down there. All of the 27 retail sites that were chocolate stops reported good sales. The restaurants said they had a great day, and so it turned out very successful for everyone involved. We also know that we generated at least 22 room nights at the Marine Hotel alone. We were able to poll all those people with a survey, a lodging survey, and we did discover that they spent between $300 and $400 on average, each of those people that spent the night there. So it was great to be able to collect some of that information for our lodgers' tax going forward. Also, last week, we had a very successful performance at the Fine Arts Center Theater. We had the National Dance Company of Ireland, and we sold every seat in the theater, which is one of the few times that that happens here in our community. And we know we had a number of attendees from Demming who came early and were able to eat in the restaurants before they went to the show. So we feel like that also helped our local business community. I met today with Chief Reynolds, and I've met with Peter Penya and Alex Brown, as we're considering new plans for the Silver City Blues Festival, new plans for arranging the parks so that there's more room there for the people. You know, it's been wall-to-wall people for years now, and we're trying to open that up and move the vendors out into the street. We're going to open up, block off the streets a little differently. The chief's helping us out. And so we're very excited about that. We have invested more money this year in artist fees to bring in three headliners instead of our regular two. And so we're hoping that we're going to actually be able to increase attendance at that event as well. I want to thank the town for their continued support on everything that we do. Thank you very much.
Thanks. And Ken Torres?
Hi. Ken Torres, I'm the new board member at the Chamber. I introduce myself. I'm Director of Sales and Marketing with WNM Communications. I've been in Silver City for about a year and three months or so. Totally enjoying the time. Looking forward to working with the Chamber. As I will echo what Sheri said, I was at the last Live at Five, tremendous turnout. And I'm really excited to put in the time, effort that's necessary to get more tourism and more business and increase the size of all of our small businesses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is councillor comments. Any comments from councillor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few. Actually, I want to thank Chief Reynolds for communicating with the Mexico Department of Transportation, Mr. Art Romero, that communication regarding the intersection at Hudson and Silver Heights Boulevard. You know, we've talked here at council meeting, and you and I have talked separately about the issues with that intersection with the right-hand turn from North Hudson to West Silver Heights, I mean, sorry, East Silver Heights, the other, my other right-hand. And the fact that there's no stop-here sign, so people kind of edge out into traffic, trying to look back and see if any oncoming traffic's coming to make a right turn on a red. And that there's a lack of, there's no left, there's a lack of a sign that says "No Left" on northbound Hudson to westbound Silver Heights. There's no, you know, across where the lights are, there's nothing saying you can't turn left. And I myself have witnessed folks from out of town, the way the striping is on the pavement, thinking that they have a left-hand turn lane, and then all of a sudden being out of left-hand turn lane, not knowing they're out of left-hand turn lane, and actually sitting in what is oncoming traffic from Silver Heights Boulevard turning onto South Hudson Street. And that had happened a lot earlier, when there was a lot of issues with pavement markings around the Clay Festival time. So I know that we're trying to work that out with the Department of Transportation to get all that corrected, and hopefully do some more. I'd like to see some more, something on the pavement itself that basically says you can't turn left here, because not everybody's really seen even the sign that used to be up that said "No Left-Hand Turn" in the first place, because people will still try to turn left there and be in the wrong place at the wrong time. So, thank you very much. That's all.
Thank you. Don't get in the car with them, for Bedison.
Why? Oh, no, I know.
We don't want to turn back.
Councillor, good.
No comments.
Thank you. Councillor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. The Western New Mexico football team gave presents to all the students at Fuerza de Ardeos for Christmas, and there were something like 240-plus students. Also, the basketball team for Western went and read with the kids at Fuerza de Ardeos. Thank you, Fay, for your venue. It was sold out. Hopefully, more people can attend events like that. We need something like that here in Grant County. Thank you. I don't know, congrats to you, Cynthia. Dos mas años, okay? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maronis.
No comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. We're on a roll here, so I'm going to forego. Next on the agenda will be, any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, approval of minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council of February 26th, 2013.
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor.
And then to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council from February 26th, 2013.
Sir, second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town Council, February 26th, 2013. Any discussion? There's a motion, a second, no discussion, to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Silver City Town Council of February 26th, 2013. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up is reports. Mr. Brown? Chief? Robert? Other Robert? And? Man, I can't get anybody to talk. I must have made them all mad. Next up will be the organizational meeting. And first up is the election of President Pro Tem. And just so everybody's aware, we did find in the code that there is a conflict in the dates that that's supposed to be selected. One area shows that it's supposed to be the first meeting after the election, and another area shows the first meeting in April. So we will rectify that coming to a council meeting near you very soon. And we're going to do it at the first meeting after the election, which is tonight. And at this point, I would like to open up for nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. Councillor.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to nominate Mr. Dafrasinta and Bedison.
Any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mr. Mike Maronis for the position of Mayor President.
I'm okay with Scott's vote.
Do you accept the nomination?
I accept the nomination, a second motion for my nomination, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Do you accept a nomination?
I do not accept the nomination.
There's a nomination for councillor Bedison to be President Pro Tem for this coming year. If there's no other nominations, I'll entertain a motion to close nominations and elect councillor Bedison as President Pro Tem. Zero motion?
Oh, my, a motion.
Councillor Ray moves, as I stated. Is there a second?
I second.
There's a motion, a second, to close nominations and elect councillor Bedison as President Pro Tem by acclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Next on the agenda is appointments of councillors to committee and board positions. First off, I'd like to welcome the town clerk, the town attorney, the town manager, and all the department heads on their return to public service to the town. And we are required to stay tapped by law, even though none of them that I know of are in jeopardy of not being here employed by the town tomorrow. And we have quite a list of boards and commissions that we all sit on. And at this point, I am not making any changes from last year, but I'll go ahead and read them. On the cemetery advisory board is councillor Maronis. On the library advisory board is councillor Cook. On the dispatch board is myself with an alternate of Jose Ray. On the Southwest Regional Transit District Board is Mike Maronis, councillor Maronis, and myself as the alternate. On the museum advisory board is councillor Bedison. On the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board is councillor Ray. On the Southwest Solid Waste Board is myself, alternate Jose Ray, with staff positions being Mr. Brown, and his alternate is Mr. Peter Penya. On the Mayor's Claimet... Manager Brown is on that as an assistant by resolution. He can't escape. The Grant County Water Commission is manager Brown and myself. The Grant County Economic Development... The Grant County Economic Development is gone. The Silver City Main Street Project Board Exoficio for their bylaws was Mr. Brown and myself. The Southwest Area Workforce Development Board is vacant. The Chief Elected Officials Region for Southwest Area is vacant. Health Council Advisory is Mr. Brown, and he's appointed by the County Commission. The Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments Board is Mr. Brown, Counselor Bedison, and Peter Pena. And I just want to comment on the Chief Elected Officials Region for Southwest Area Board. I've made a conscious decision that we not appoint to that board. They have, within their own bylaws, they have an automatic appointment for the chief elected official of all the local governments in their jurisdiction. I find that to be very inappropriate. And there, in the past, has been some administrative issues within that organization that I was not comfortable with, and did not want to personally be exposed or expose the town to that. And until I am comfortable that they are performing business in a upstanding manner and managing by their audit standards, then the town will not participate in that board. And just, just so everybody's aware, a commission represents the Town Council and has authority. The, a board represents the Town Council and has authority to spend money and set policy. Advisory indicates that they advise the Town Council and Town Manager on specific issues. An exoficio indicates that the Town Council is represented and supports the group, but does not have a vote. And those are the roles we have, and if there's no objections, those are the appointments. Hearing no objections, the appointments will continue. And next is under unfinished business, approval disapproval of ordinance number 1216 and ordinance amending Chapter 6, Animals, Section 6-78, 6-80, and 6-83 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Silver City, dealing with fees and deposits. And this is the final reading for this ordinance. Counselor Morones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we noticed, it's really barely over a page. It's just some minor changes that staff at the, at the animal shelter has come to me with in regards to some inconsistencies between some of the fees that we charge versus some of the fees the county charges. And the animal shelter does work with both entities. And this is a way of simplifying matters on their end, and also cleaning up some language that will help them administrate even some further principles that they're looking for, like making, ensuring that animals are spayed and neutered and such like that. So it's just some minor changes, making everything consistent within the county, and also giving the animal, the animal shelter some authority in repeat offenders of animals at large, getting those in and making sure that they're spayed and neutered, so that we can help control some of the populations. I think it's a, a good little change, a good start to improving our animal ordinance. After the first reading, I have not heard a single comment for or against, oddly enough. And I'm going to take that as an affirmative that people are pretty satisfied with it. Thanks, Steph.
Thank you. We'll go to the audience. Anybody want to comment on ordinance number 1216? Heidi?
Thank you, Mayor, Counselors, Steph. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on some of the concerns that you expressed when the NOI came up. This ordinance is primarily public safety, and I went back through some of the records, not real extensively, but on the concerns that you had about the fifth impoundment. I did want to point out that a fifth impoundment is only that, the number of times the animal's been caught running at large, which means that there's an uncountable amount that they may have been running at large where they were not caught. And I did look back just briefly through some of the records, and less than 10% of the animals, of all the animals coming into the shelter, would fall into a third or fourth impoundment, and even less than that, a fifth impoundment. Most of them would actually fall under another section in the ordinance. The unfortunate and sad reality is many people don't claim, come to claim the animals anyway. And I also did, just wanted to add, I know there was some questions raised about what are the policies of the High Desert Humane Society and of the animal shelter, and when we, we're going to be renewing our agreement, or proceeding to renew our agreement in April and May, and I would be glad to come give a short little presentation on, on the other aspects of what happens to the animals, and what other possibilities, and what other options that we offer.
Thanks, Heidi. Any other comments from the audience? Seeing none, comments from the, comments or questions or motion from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number 1216 and ordinance amending Chapter 6, Animals, Section 6-78, 6-80, and 6-83 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Silver City, dealing with fees and deposits.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion, a second, to approve. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, there's a motion, a second, to approve ordinance number 1216 and ordinance amending Chapter 6, Animals, Section 6-78, 6-80, and 6-83 of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Silver City, dealing with fees and deposits. Roll call, please.
Counselor Morones?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Bedison?
Aye.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Counselor Morones. This is the first animal ordinance, I believe, to pass in state history without having a bunch of citizen input. Next on the agenda is under new business, approval disapproval of bid number 12/13-2, Black Hawk Gravity Sewer Improvements.
I received 10 bids for the, for bid 12/13-2 for the Black Hawk Sewer Gravity Improvements. At the time of the bid opening, the lowest bid was actually for more than the funding that was available for the NRT program. So what we did is, myself and Robert Esquerra went back, had some discussions with the staff of NRT, it's a program under the Environment Department, and they have agreed to increase the funding amount to cover the low bid plus grocery receipts and any additional engineering that is going to be required. So it's staff's recommendation to award the bid to Renegade Construction, Inc., for $359,500 plus grocery receipts tax, with the contingency that we receive the final approval for the funding and writing from NRT.
Any comments from the audience? Do you want to say anything, Robert? Seeing none, any comments, questions, or emotion from the council? We're writing the motion, if you're wondering what this does. Approval for the final.
Final approval of additional funding. Because we've received verbal approval, but we haven't received the contract yet. That's all we're willing.
So with contingency that we receive approval for the additional funding.
I'm going to need help with this.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. I move to approve, per staff recommendation, that we award, I'm sorry, I move to approve, per staff recommendation, approval of number 12/13-2, Black Hawk Gravity Sewer Improvements, that it be awarded to Renegade Construction Incorporated in the amount of $359,500, with the contingency that we receive final approval of the additional funding, plus the grocery receipts tax of 7.3750% for a total project of $389,013.13. Did I say it right?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? There's a motion, a second, to award bid number 12/13-2, Black Hawk Gravity Sewer Improvements, to Renegade Construction, per staff recommendation, for a total of $359,500 plus grocery receipts. Contingency on the, the final approval of the additional funding by NRT. Everybody understand what we're voting on?
Yes, Mr. Guy.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of Resolution Number 2013-14, a resolution authorizing the purchase of certain parcels of improved property, commonly known as Silco Theater at 311 North Pollard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Counselor Morones.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. This is a resolution that would have the town purchase the Silco Theater from the Silver City Main Street Project with several contingencies. And we'd be looking to, to close on the property at the end of May for the lesser of $390,000 or appraised value. Some of the contingencies in the agreement include a scope of work, of improvements that need to happen before then. And the, and in order to do that, the Main Street Project must get a, a general, a licensed general contractor that can perform that work. This is a very exciting project. The Silver City Main Street Project secured a grant from the Silver City, from the state Main Street, in the amount of $175,000 that really can only be used for this. If we don't, if this was not to happen, we would just have to turn back that $175,000, which would, which would be a shame that the state has made, their voices heard, that not only does Silver City need this to happen, but the state of New Mexico needs this to happen. So it's, it's a very important project. The other elements of this is the town would be seeking, seeking financing for this, secured by a lease agreement that the Silver City Main Street Project will enter into, in which case its management, its board and management will be subletting to hopefully a, the storefronts, the apartment, and along with the theater itself to be operated over the long term. This is extremely important to Silver City. For the first time in my adult life, and as far as I can remember, and even from the history I know, that we are actually without a theater. It's almost shocking that that's the case. So this is extremely important. It's extremely time, time sensitive. The $175,000 grant is coming up. We need to use it. And I'm strongly in favor of this, and I think it's good for the community, and I'd like to see, very, very quickly, I see that we do have a lot of the Main Street Board. Could the Main Street Board stand up, please? And, and why I, why I ask for this, if we look, there's, as you can see, there's a lot of very successful and important community leaders in this group who I strongly, strongly believe can see this work through. If there's any fears of, of this not being able to come to fruition in the next couple of months, if there was ever fears that, that this group couldn't see to the fact that we can maintain those sublets and make sure that we, that the Main Street Project makes good on their, on their end of the deal, I, I have none of those fears. Thank you, guys.
Anyone from the audience to speak?
Mayor, Town Council staff, and members of the community, and our Main Street Board, I would really like to thank you for considering this opportunity to bring a movie theater to downtown Silver City. And this is not only bringing a movie theater, but it is bringing renewed economic vitality to our entire downtown district. And your willingness to apply for a loan from the New Mexico Finance Authority would show tremendous support for this program. In addition, I want to assure you that the Main Street Board is committed to bringing this project to completion and to leasing to a theater operator so that we can have movies, and that that would be our finance, being able to repay the financing through the Main Street. And thank you. Do you have any questions?
If, if there was to come in a large, modern, four, five-plex movie theater, would that harm the Main Street's ability to refund this loan?
Well, the Silco Theater can be equipped to be a functioning movie theater. If there were competition that made that not economically viable, it is also the one theater that we have in the downtown that was originally designed to be for production. So there are other uses that the building can be put to other than the movie theater. So it is a multifunctional presentation space. But initially, our goal is to fill the void and to start as a beginning to, which is the greater downtown theater district, which would incorporate multiple screens, but in the downtown, as opposed to a possible freestanding facility that is not located downtown, really wouldn't make as much economic impact to the other businesses. It would just be a freestanding theater that would benefit the theater, but not the downtown. So we're hoping to establish the viability of having movies downtown, which creates a multiple return on investment.
Thanks.
Is there anything else?
Any other questions? Thanks, L. Thanks, Lucy.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Hi, Isaac.
How are you doing? Good evening, Council, Mayor, and staff members and community members. My name is Isaac Brunis, I'm the Vice President of Student Affairs and Enrollment Management at Western New Mexico University, and on behalf of our President, Dr. Joseph Shepherd, we'd like to show our support for this project as well. As you know, our university is in, in growth mode right now. Last, last fall, we had a 13% increase in our enrollment. This semester, we have an 8% increase in our enrollment. We have over 3,500 students currently attending Western. We're in the process of building a 176-bed residence halls that would open this fall, and then the following spring, we have an additional 48 beds that will open up, and then following that, we have an additional 400 beds. So this project is very important to us for our recruitment and retention of our students. I mean, just really having the opportunity for our students to have something to do, we're in walking distance to downtown, and if our students had that opportunity to, to go take in a movie or be engaged in some way downtown, I think this project is very important, and I think to us, we, we like to extend our support for this project as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing none, from the council? Counselor Bedesen.
I just have one question. Counselor Moronis, or Mr. Brown, can you tell me if there's any cost to the town over the long term?
No, the way that it is, we've worked on the loan, the loan was worked on so that the annual debt service payout would, would be actually less than what they're currently paying in rent right now. So it, it makes it feasible for them to repay the loan, and nothing coming out of the town's pocket, other than us having to get the loan and do the work of getting, getting the grant, getting our, the state's going to pay 175,000, we're going to borrow the rest from the New Mexico Finance Authority. Just going through the process, I spoke with our representative at the New Mexico Finance Authority today, and he said there's, he's seen no problems whatsoever, it's just a matter of time going through the process to get those funds so that we can close by the end of May.
Counselor Brunis.
Mr. Mayor, I, I voiced my support of this for, for a while now. Interestingly enough, my, my comment is probably not as eloquent as Lucy's, but if this project goes and it builds steam, a freestanding multiplex on the highway sprawl, they won't even be able to compete with downtown. That's the reality. And with that, I move for approval of resolution number 2013-14, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a certain parcel of improved property, commonly known as the Silco Theater, 311 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any other discussion from the council? There's a motion, a second to approve, and no further discussion on resolution number 2013-14, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a certain parcel of improved property, commonly known as the Silco Theater, at 311 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Roll call.
Counselor Moronis?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Bedesen?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, and then you can pat them on the back.
I move to adjourn.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.